Meeting tonight, November 5th, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion to postpone Executive Session One MRSA 4056D Labor Contract Negotiations, Special Executive Session, and we're going to postpone that if, uh, I could make a motion.
I'm moved. Discussion?
Just the reasoning was that we postponed regular negotiations, so there wasn't really anything to share.
Okay, all those in favor? Post. Okay.
And I'd like to make a second motion for the Superintendent update to move from position eight on the agenda to position four, um, so that we can
Get students.
Get students up in presenting.
So moved. The other discussion? Hey, all those in favor? Hey, good. So we will next go to our public input statement that the Vice Chair will read.
Uh, the first public input session is a 21-minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the Board Chair. Each speaker will give his or her name, address, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the Board Chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the Board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may be disagreement. Regardless of outcomes or opinions, we pledge to move forward with respect. This time is for comments and questions for the Board, but please be aware that questions may not be able to be answered at this meeting.
Do we have any public input tonight?
Joyce T. from North Berwick. I'd like to make a comment about what happened at our last meeting. Public input must be expressed politely and respectfully, focus on issues, and not be personal. So this is not being personal. I found that this was not the case at our last meeting. Any person angrily targeted two Board members, blatantly singled them out rather than speaking through his concerns to the chairperson. Unfortunately, the chair did not correct a lot of blatant disregard of the rules of paragraph B.
Excuse me, Joyce, could you please speak louder?
Is there a
I know it's turned the mic on.
Yeah, it's not a mic, it's not a, it's not a live mic, sorry.
Okay, I'll try to be louder. The same individual, is that okay?
Yeah.
The same individual did not adhere to the three-minute rule and spoke over that time and was not corrected by the chair. Neither was it delivered in an orderly and respectful manner, but with belligerence and anger. His statement that he wanted to address was overshadowed by his behavior, and the chair appeared to be unable to rectify the situation. Sadly, sad 60 students witnessed this. I wonder what lesson they learned. Lastly, the chairperson decides whether a statement is appropriate and has the power to withdraw recognition of the speaker. This was not done that night, even though the presenter broke several rules. But if the job of the school board is to show how we can work as a community to show our students the proper methods to use for positive outcomes, which include our school, the parents, and the community. This charade was one of the poorest examples of leadership or education. I respectfully submit that we need swift changes to make our school board function as a strong body of leaders who politely share the open-minded exchange of ideas and solutions rather than the commonly seen adult bickering that has been displayed so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public input tonight?
Jennifer Dillon-Libden. I'm also here to kind of mirror some of what was just said. My parent and children in the district. I'm here to voice my concerns over the tones used in these meetings and the use of the norms card and the annual goals. Um, in regards to the norms card, there are obviously very polarized views, views on this board, and I think the person that holds the card should be one that can truly be impartial and fair. I don't know if that would, could be the chair or vice chair or a third party even, I don't know if that's possible, but um, I noticed that the card wasn't held up for certain members and even another member that was like, looked like she was being locked. I feel like there's been some aggressive verbal attacks on these certain Board members. They were voted in by the community and by parents and students here. Everyone should be using cordial, mature, and respectful tones, and you all have the right to express your opinions and viewpoints. In regards to the Facebook message, there have not been talks on annual goals in a number of years and the issues the Board had with that, I believe. Can I say certain names on the board? In our respectful way?
I think in a respectful way, that's
Yeah, sure. I believe Nancy Sewell responded in a way that should be admired. She said she hadn't seen any minutes that spoke about those and requested to see any notes on it to correct, you know, to correct herself if there was. I also want to thank Nancy and Josh, Josh for taking the time and effort to come up with thoughtful and measurable goals, even if they were rejected. I wasn't aware of the agenda of that meeting and I'm not on Facebook. But there are parents in the community who agree with you and want our kids to perform better and get the help they need in math and reading when they are struggling. We lost a high school math teacher just recently who didn't agree with the way that classes are run and graded, where kids are allowed to retake tests and homework isn't counted toward grades, among other concerns. We should be able, we should be open to changing how we challenge, academically challenge and support students and reevaluate the system when needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We are, we'll move into the minutes of November 21st.
No, I did, Josh had reached out and I made an amendment to the minutes in terms of change. Language regarding the I click on that while I see the amended. I did update them and so I don't know, let me see if I can highlight it for you. If you can click on them, yep. I'm gonna highlight it right now for you. The motion around the, to adopt the strategic goal plans that the Board has been working on with potential formatting that allows for including evidence. So we had talked around quite a bit of it. And I
Which paragraph did I say?
Um, so hold on, let me see, let me just highlight it and let's make it green. See it down? That's the language that you shared with me, right, Josh? Yep.
This paragraph, page two.
Somebody want to read it who can see it?
Sure, sure. It says, Ms. Wheeler made the motion, it was seconded by Ms. Hurley to adopt the strategic goal plans that the Board has been working on with potential formatting that allows for including evidence. So we talked about around the time bound and all that kind of stuff, so, but the language that you specifically used was this right here.
Anybody have any other corrections? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make this motion to accept the minutes, that's amended.
I can. Other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, accepting the minutes as amended? Those opposed? Okay, and we have this
I pensions, right?
I was not here. Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to what used to be number eight, our Superintendent update.
Thank you. So we have Mr. Moore, our Athletic Director here, um, who is going to talk a little bit about an athletic season that we just had, and we have some
Hi folks, my name is Aaron Moore, I'm the Athletic Director here at the high school. First of all, thank you for having us take some time to present tonight. Anytime we have an accomplishment like this, we like to bring it to the Board and showcase it to the community. Uh, anytime any of our teams make it to a regional championship or state championship, we like to, we like to showcase these awards based on the student effort, the, the, the community that surrounds our kids, the boosters, the volunteers, it takes village to make these things happen. So whenever, whenever good things like this happen, we want to make sure that we showcase it. So we'd like to present our, our 2024 football team this year, and I have my head coach, Keenan Blinder, that's gonna speak a little bit about the season. Thank you.
So I'm Keenan Blinder, I'm the head coach, um, and these are just a snapshot of some of the seniors that were part of the 2024 football program. I want to thank our boosters, we have a lot of parents that put in a lot of time to help this program, um, and sort of port us behind the scenes. Also, us and the seniors and the rest of the team want to also show some appreciation to the community. Showing up to our home games, we had numbers like we've never seen before, um, it was a pretty incredible season also when we traveled. We ended up going seven and two over the regular season and finished eight and three overall. We were the number one ranked defense and third ranked offense in the regular season for Class A. We went into the playoffs as the number three seed, we beat Bon Eagle in a playoff game that hasn't been done in 20 years. This also put us into the Class A South Championship game, in which we became the runner-up, but we haven't reached that game in 27 years since 1997. This is the, um, this plaque represents a lot of the hard work and dedication these student athletes have put into this. At the end of the season, we ended with eight all-conference players and four all-academic players. The all-academic players, Connor Boucher, Kevin Chandler, Caden Dustin, and Tommy Gagnon. And then our eight all-conference players, Sean Leach, Kevin Chandler, Will Wilkinson, Hayden Davis, Dom Dumont, Caden Dustin, Tommy Gagnon, and Jamir Rose. And lastly, Jamir Rose is also up for our Gatorade Player of the Year and Fitzpatrick Trophy winner, which is the best player in the state.
Woo-hoo!
And again, we appreciate your time and appreciate what you do for our student athletes and for their success. Congratulations.
Years ago.
Other Superintendent updates since we're in this category. The first one is, um, we had the North Berwick Parade last Saturday, and that has actually grown. Yes, by several floats, so I know they're growing their program. So that was really nice, the weather was nice also, so that was great. The Berwick Parade is this Saturday, we know that we have some of our Board members attending that, and, um, it'll be another, that's a bigger parade because it incorporates Somersworth as well, so, um, always a fun time. The weather's gonna be a little cooler.
Dress warm.
Dress warm. Just for those of you that are sitting on support staff negotiations, a reminder that that, uh, meeting is on the 11th, which is, uh, Wednesday at 3:15. And then, um, if, I'm gonna email, just this is a heads up, the Teacher Negotiation Subcommittee. Um, I will send an email tomorrow, just, we need to meet in between the times because we just didn't get to meet last week, um, this past week. So I'll just send an email tomorrow with getting some dates that we can meet ahead of the next meeting, just to keep that going. And that's all I had under Superintendent's update.
Now we will go to number four, School Safety Overview.
Okay, great. So in October, every, every year in October, we typically bring forward the, um, annual page of concurrence, mean, uh, that the schools have, have, um, used as far as their safety plans. And what that means is, um, the committee at the building level has met and gone through any changes or shifts, even if that means changing committee members or updating certain things. So we just verbally talk about that, but, um, there was a question that if we could have a little bit more information, um, from our administrators, just generally, again, general speaking, not, um, you know, specific routes or anything like that, so some overviews. Uh, so we do have our, some of our administrators in the audience who will go through some of that. I think what I would like to start with, um, is just a couple of years ago, we, we, um, adopted the ALICE protocol. And that, we, we ran a public forum for that, and we talked about that because it is different than what some of our students had been used to in the elementary schools and even moving up. Um, and it's based on best practices. So we did a public forum on that, we had that filmed. So I think what we're gonna start with is that, um, just a little overview for you on, um, ALICE, and we're gonna give the example of our high school, um, so Principal Dufort's gonna come down and just go through. I think so. Or, or is everybody okay moving down? Okay.
The moment, these are things. Okay, yeah.
Chair, we're good, yeah. Absolutely. You're welcome.
I'm just trying to get by the
Sorry.
I know, I was looking for cookies, come on.
Thank you, Ally.
Sounds like it's waiting, right?
I'm just trying to find our cookies.
There's a whole basket down there.
You guys gonna take the basket down?
Hit the screen.
It's the display.
No signal. Oh, no signal, what?
The plants, the plants.
Really, once you connect.
Oh, all set.
I had to practice.
Okay. Oh, because I was gonna say
I'm good, yeah.
Technology is not my strong suit, I have
Can you start chatting?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we can go ahead and get started, the, the visual isn't super important, but, but what folks will have is, so each year we share our plan for that year with all of our students. So that happens each and every year, teachers go through in small groups of students with just a refresher for what's to be expected, and obviously, we all acknowledge and understand that it's incredibly sad and terrible that this needs to be part of our, in early September class period to go through this, but it is the world we live in, so we do it. Um, and so with ALICE, a couple of pieces just for, for folks to know. So our staff go through an online training, they go through an in-person review of that online training with our SRO at the high school, and then we do, through our practices and through the sharing of this plan, those practical implications of what that's going to look like. And I think one of the big takeaways, and it's very interesting, because for me, so I guess I would say folks of a certain age, we know what lockdowns used to look like for us, um, and it's very, very different. So I think one of the things I hear from parents often, and we have some great conversations, like, while you were doing your lockdown review, the teacher was talking to the students, and that is, I mean, that is a plan to talk students through, what information do we have, what is the best plan, what is the best practices based on the information that we have? Because the information is going to drive what the reaction should be. And there isn't a necessarily one-size-fits-all, and that best practices really speaks to making those informed decisions based on the information you have at the time. So I think one, one thing to keep in mind, the, the ALICE acronym, alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. Those are the five parts, they don't necessarily happen in that order. The acronym was written because it spells a word, not because A comes before L comes before I comes before, you know, it's, it just, if, if you put it in the correct order, it wouldn't make a lot of sense, so it was made out of convenience. Um, and one thing that's important is, just to keep in mind that it's a proactive response to needing to, to respond to intruders being in the building. Um, and so one of the things this does, and one of the things I really like about this, it is very tangible for students. And so we walk through with students, at the end of this, here's what we want you to be able to do. Here's what's expected of students. You understand, you can define the strategies, you know when you would use each strategy, and you practice the strategies during hands-on training, and those are our, what would have been back in the day, the traditional lockdown or evacuation, that is the practice of those strategies. The goals, we want to obviously maximize the safety, and I think understanding that it's not one-size-fits-all. The other thing, and this is a tangible benefit that we have seen, going through the preparation leads to peace of mind, confidence, and more successful outcomes. And, and our students will talk about, hey, you know, we'll, we'll do a practice, and then students may have lunch after, so we're talking, and they'll be like, hey, it really made sense that this, because the teacher may have gone through a scenario with students during one of our drills and said, okay, if this, let's talk about how we would respond, what would be our next step. And again, the Board will have this slideshow presentation, so you can look more at it and look more through it. It's not, and, and Ms. Bové said this, but this is not specific to Noble High School, we have taken the ALICE. Now, we have put our tweaks on it, we have edited this, but it's edited for ease of understanding for our students or how it applies. It's not, you know, folks having this is not going to in any way compromise our response to an emergency. So I just think that's really important. So again, they're broken up into two sections, your awareness and communication strategies, and then based on the information you have, how do you respond? And really making sure that drives your response based on what you know at the time. And I think Mr. A is gonna kind of walk us through a drill in a couple of minutes. And that tool that he's gonna use is how we can inform staff members of the information we have at the time. And as I think most everyone in the room is aware, we had the opportunity, um, to, to practice under pretty stressful situations, um, and having that ability to communicate with one another is so important, that really, and again, I'm, I'm not gonna say that everyone had complete peace of mind, because that is never the case until you're on the other side of a situation. But being able to communicate and being able to share the information that we had at the time was incredibly beneficial. Um, and again, the whole point is, when you are situationally aware, you can then proceed best on what is going to come next. So for example, and we talked about this a couple of weeks, but I know, um, you know, certainly we have a different audience here tonight. We, the, the best practice was absolutely given the information we had with our situation here at the high school was not to evacuate the building. And so it's very important, that was, that sort of hit us in the face with how important that information is and being able to share information. Because one of the pieces of ALICE that is, is different than what we grew up with is oftentimes, the safest place to be might not be inside of the building. And I think, again, for me, in looking back at mine, you, you stayed in the building no matter what, you didn't move no matter what, like, that was the norm. And really, best practices are, not being in the building potentially could be infinitely safer. But in the situation we were dealing with and where the threat was reported to be coming from, being inside the building was the safest place. So it really kind of hits you with using that information and having that information is key on what response makes the most sense. So again, this will, you know, certainly give you something to flip through further, it goes in a little bit more to some of these areas. But I think just the big takeaway for me is the change, and that conversation I have with parents, like, why are you guys doing it differently? And, and really, it's because the best practices have changed. It has, it's not, you know, a decision made by an individual, it's really following those best practices. And I think ALICE is considered one of those gold standards. And again, I, I can't say enough how terrible it is that we need to think about gold standards in student and staff safety, but so, I think that's good.
All right. Principal Articbo is gonna talk a little bit about CrisisGo. CrisisGo is one of our emergency notification systems within the buildings. Um, it's not a system that goes out to the community, it does go to our first responders. So our first responders, our staff, has been trained in CrisisGo. So I'm gonna get my computer in case I'm gonna set us off.
Yeah, they're gonna set you off. All right, so real quick, like, a couple, a bunch of years ago, we, uh, we're looking for opportunities and options to make sure that we were communicating in the best way. And we, we took, we took a little trip, did some CrisisGo work, and it really has been, uh, I think, super successful as a district. When you think about fire drills, lockdown drills, things like that, we still all follow the same things that have always happened. We still pull fire alarms, we still, uh, make announcements over the intercom. And when we realize, like, things have shifted, like, what we know now is different. So, uh, we know that if we have to call 911, it goes through dispatch, and the time from dispatch to get to a police officer, then to figure out what to do, like, that takes a long time. So we have an app that every teacher has on their school, or every staff member has on a school-issue device, and optionally, as you want, you can add it on to your personal device. And anybody can trigger an emergency situation and then communicate, uh, what's happening and where. And so, so we set off this thing, hopefully it won't do the middle school. Okay, so all right, so, like, every teacher or every staff member outside of the leadership team, the administration, has one button to press, and it's a scary-looking button, and it's literally for those emergencies, like, uh, security emergencies. So we do a lockdown, so I'm going to trigger it, let's see here. Okay, so so instantly with one swipe, it's going in police cars, it's going to North Berwick, I mean, going to Berwick Fire, first responders, there is no thing. I can tell you that we ran a drill with just our staff at the middle school, and in three minutes, I had police cars in the dooryard because, uh, Officer Fogg, and I'm gonna throw him out here, did not tell this team that we were running drill. And I'll own my side, like, there are two buttons, you can, you can click drill and it turns the alarm blue, and the what happens with the system is it keeps it in-house in this And what happens with the systems that keeps it in-house in this school, when you don't click the drill, it stays red and that goes out to the people. So instant, but just that quick. And really it took me a little bit, it's a little clunkier to get in here because it, it's a fake made up school. And so we usually it's one button, one further click and you're ready to go. And so what's cool about CrisisGo is that I can communicate. And Scott a text or a message through CrisisGo right now, it says, and a heart attack from Brett Saucier, who's not here. Because he is on this. So what can happen is, is you can trigger a roster event. And so this program syncs with Infinite Campus. And so your day two, block three science class, you're, if you're out of the building or in the building, you can start accounting for students who, I have Michelle Kinnison, I have Audrey Bogue. I know that, I know that Joe Forte is absent today, right? So you can communicate those things. And so depending on the building, so if I'm at the middle school and I'm going through this in an emergency, right in the situation, central office folks can be running and communicating to the public. If parents are calling, if we're looking for a specific person, there are people who are point guarding that the actual situation off-site immediately. And we're all tied together. Other cool things you can do, you can take pictures and send them. You can take, you can share files, you can take videos, you can do audio recordings. If you are not at school, you can do a panic alarm, anyone with on their phone. And it'll give you GPS coordinates to your location. So like somebody could be like, maybe, maybe they're in a tree stand and fell out of a tree stand. Like holy cow, CrisisGo panic, like someone's going to come out and help you. I don't know. There, it's incredible. It's incredibly versatile. We practice it administratively. We use them for both fire drills and lockdown drills. And we, the goal is not to get every single kid accounted for during a drill. It's for every adult to understand how to account for kids in a drill. And so there are ways where I have a random kid because for whatever reason, they were in the hallway there with me. I can account for that student by alphabetical. I can look up Michelle Kinnison's name and say, hey, she's with me in room 218. Or she was just got dismissed. And so we are all communicating with that. It's not radios, it's not calling 911 and clogging up the system. We do it all through there. So it's something that we are practicing regularly. I don't know if we're supposed to report on the drills, but the middle school grades six through eight or I think it's six through eight, the state domain requires to run eight drills to in the first two weeks of school and then six. And we have completed three lockdown drills and five fire drills so far this year. And we will continue to do that. And we practice as a staff with students not in the building as well.
Question.
Yep.
If you saw a teacher having, or any adult in the building having a medical crisis, can you alert to that? Does that also work for that situation too?
So a teacher themselves would not be able to do that because their alert is literally the lockdown alert. It's the only option on their thing. And we did it that way so that they didn't have to look through which option to hit. If we, in that situation, probably the radio is going to be the quickest because we'll get the SRO or we'll get, you know, we have stuff going on. But if somebody was by themselves or like, let's say you were in some like onesie bathroom and like the little deadbolt thing was spinning and like you, like you couldn't unlock yourself. Like maybe you can actually, if I, if I send a message, see if it makes some noise. I'm just going to make some. Usually it goes ding ding and it lets someone know that someone just sent a message. So there is an alert that happens. That alarm that goes off is actually a different one. It's like a air raid sound. Most of our schools have the air raid sounds. Students have heard that, like it doesn't matter if you're aware that it's going to happen. Even when I do it, I'm like, it definitely gets you. Also, it doesn't go on forever. Like I don't know if the timeline is 15 seconds or 30 seconds, but certainly not more than 30 seconds. So if someone like left a computer on the desk and like, we don't need it to go off for a long time in a scary situation, it will just timeout and shut off. So it's a good question, but probably not in that situation.
I've heard that it's in certain places in the high school, really thick brick, really difficult. Has that been a, has that been a challenge for staff? Maybe AJ, you can speak to that in high school?
No, for this, so like sending text messages and things like that is very, very difficult. But our staff have like CrisisGo on their computers. So that is projected out through our wifi. It's good.
I would say on an evacuation, when we're outside of the building, if we have, like lots of schools don't have any service, like in North Burwick, there's dead spots and things like that. So if you don't have service, then you're trying to take attendance and it's hard. But they're like, oftentimes you find your neighbor has service, like whatever teacher right down there. Like, hey, can you help me put my kids in? And you can do it that way. Sometimes you have a substitute teacher and they don't have it on their phone at all. So you work together like that. I know our tech department has been working really hard to get wifi out of the building, parking lots. Different, some of our evacuation locations have exterior wifi now. So it's something that our capacity is building and it's gotten significantly better.
So those are just two K-12 systems that we're using, Alice and CrisisGo. So I think Michelle and Tina, so Principal Kinnison and Pardy are going to just give a little overview as well. So again, elementary.
When you release the drill, that's, that's a good sound.
So we're just going to give a little overview of how this, our safety plans at the elementary level.
Well, and I think this is things that we all do as K-12.
We each have safety committees. And each year we review our safety plans and make revisions and review them as needed. And then we send them to our fire department and the police department to look over as well before we turn it into the district. We have safety committees that need to go over those as well as need to debrief after drills or after needed situations and they'll debrief with them. We have required drills, like Mr. Archimont said, we have required drills to complete each year. So we, we do our drills.
Elementary school's 10, so we do more than, more than the upper grades. We don't necessarily go through like the Alice training for high school would be kind of inappropriate with tiny little ones. But with the fourth and fifth graders, we do talk about things like emergencies come in different shapes and sizes. And sometimes it's better to stay in a classroom is more safe than sometimes it's better to get out. We talk about what we do if we're blocked and we couldn't get out this way, where would we go? What are alternate routes? If we had to stay in the class, what could we do to make it safer? We also have had great luck with the fire departments coming over to run drills with us and check out our systems and give us notes.
They give us feedback, just like timing, what areas we have, you know, looked, took longer, how we can adjust. Just checking our route, you know, the route we get out and how quickly we can do it and how safely we can do it.
Do you use that same phone program?
We do, yeah.
Yep, and we've, we go through it with staff. I personally haven't done it in drills with students. We've practiced in staff meetings.
Yes.
So it seems to me that the little ones are the ones that are the most vulnerable in this situation. How do you deal with some of their fears?
Well, so when we first introduced, well, usually our littles, one of the biggest fears is the noise of the fire alarm. They, the loud noise. So when we start practicing our drills for those type, we prepare them, we tell them it's coming. So they are aware the first few times we practice, they know that, you know, we're going to have it. So they're a little, you know, prepared for that. And even at HAZI, the first time we do a fire drill, for instance, we don't even pull the noise yet. We practice getting out without the noise. And then we start using the noise and they hear it. When we have our different types of lockdown drills, the first time or two, we talk through it. So like myself or Mr. Robert, so they kind of, oh, we're practicing this is what we should be doing right now. This is this type of drill. So they hear like, oh, okay, I know what we're doing before we just, you know, call the drills for them. And then when Ms. Kinnison was talking about, you know, how appropriate or not it is for some of those other drills, the teachers kind of just present it. We have a little slideshow we review. And then they kind of present it as, and sometimes if you have to get out and your teachers aren't here, you know, how, how could we get out or what can we put around the door? So it's just the way they kind of talk through, follow with them and make it that way.
And a lot of emphasis on like, it's really important to be a good listener. Because you know, when you have tiny, tiny little people, they're going to be directed where to go, you know? So we're going to be listening, we're going to be paying attention, we're going to have that watch level of zero.
Any other questions?
Yes. Do you deal with much for the students get emotionally triggered by it or?
Honestly, we practice so frequently that I haven't had much, like it's with emotional responses to it. Very much what we come across is the loud noise. And so we know those students who can't tolerate that. So we have supports in place, you know, they might know what, know it's coming and maybe wear some earphones or be by their trusted adult when it's going to happen.
I think all the times that we talk through them through so much of it, it becomes, you know, not as scary for them when they're hearing these different, you know, drills when we have to practice them.
Do parents know then, are parents aware that that's happened during the day?
We report how many drills we've done through our newsletter. We put it in our newsletter. If something out of the ordinary, you'll let, you'll let parents know that that's happened that day typically, right? Something.
I was just going to ask that, that I remember last year, one day I picked the kids up and I knew they had a drill. I was like, oh, did you have it? I forget which one it was. And they just said, is that the inside one or the outside one? They didn't know lockdown or society. It was, it's trained so well to them as like so desensitized that like they weren't, you know, there wasn't emotion really related to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other general questions about safety, school safety or?
Can I just, are we confident, do we feel good about entry points and tools? How they're controlled for people potentially getting into the building?
We've done a lot of work in that area and we have a lot of sweeps going on throughout the day in all the buildings about those entry points. So yes, we're feeling comfortable. I think some of the hard part is working with students to, if they see somebody at the door, not letting them in, especially if they know who they are. Even if it's a staff member that travels from building to building and they know, oh, it's so and so, really just not letting them come in. That's, that's one of the pieces.
Yeah, polite children. Yeah, when they travel to schools, I mean, students will do that for any adult that just has this. Yes, default to being courteous. Yes, right, exactly. It is, yeah, I worry about kids. I know parents with young kids worry about the emotional toleration. It's interesting to me that we are looking at this as, oh, you sort of desensitized it. That alone, sorry, that's my little.
Just trying to see what's next on the agenda. Is it the, it's the pre-K? No, it's the goals. Okay. All right. When we talk about pre-K, we're going to be down here. So I don't know if you want to go back up for goals or do we want to make an adjustment to the agenda to talk about pre-K now? What's your?
Let's just do pre-K now, right? Yeah.
Are you, okay.
We'll make a motion to move number six to the fight. Okay. A position and move five steps.
Thank you.
Okay. So as we discussed at the last board meeting, we were one of three school business funding, preliminary funding for pre-K. Our grant was substantial compared to the other two ones that received grants. And so we submitted the grant and then we had a meeting right prior to Thanksgiving break with the Department of Education, just talking about some of the things, other things that they needed to see in our grant. So we really worked hard on that. We worked hard with our partnering preschool that we're going to be working with in Lebanon. And so we got that submitted yesterday afternoon. And we sent you a copy of that, just if you wanted to take a look at that. Because it's already been approved by the Department of Education, that's not the focus of tonight. That, that whole document's not. What we want to talk a little bit about is our next steps. And so the biggest piece right now is that with this presentation and your discussion, we do need to have a decision from the board about if you want to move ahead in accepting the grant or not. That's the biggest discussion. We know and we acknowledge that the turnover time or the turnaround time has been very quick. The state Department of Education has to award the money and have it accepted by the districts by December 31st, or they lose the funds. So we have to, we have to agree or accept or decline now because they need to move ahead with, there's a lot of documentation that they need to do over the next couple of weeks before December 31st. If we decline the funding, we just, we, we decline. We don't know if these grants will be available again. We know that pre-K is something that we've talked about for years and years. And we also know that Child Development Services, we will be starting in 2028. We will be required to work with all of the students three to five, three years old to five years old who are receiving special education services or early intervention services. So this is an opportunity that we are looking at and excited about as a stepping stone to look at 2028. We also know how it's complex because we're in the middle of a building study, which is why we have reached out and worked with a partner in Lebanon because that was really one of our areas with spacing and the building, the age of the building, everything. So, so we did a little tweaking with that. And we were very fortunate when we were talking with the department at our meeting, they were very thrilled we had a partnership with a local pre-K childcare center. So Shing and AJ are going to spend a little bit of time right now, kind of talking about kind of the jumping off point from the last presentation about our next steps. You're good.
I don't know if I have to present, you kind of just. So we're back again tonight and we're excited to talk about pre-K. Again, I may echo what Ms. Bovee just said. I was going to make a lot of the same points. So last time we were here, we told you that kind of this conversation to just explore pre-K with the board was expedited because of this unexpected last round of funding from the state. And it had a really short window to get that application in. So at that meeting, really, we were just giving a general overview about why as a district, we would be excited to implement a pre-K and that we had such a short window that we had to fill out this application. Our next message to you was we would not make any other further action until we heard if we receive the grant notification. So that's the one thing that's been checked off that next steps list. But other than that, we are not going to move forward with anything until we hear from the board. And like Ms. Bovee said, really that is the primary goal for this discussion. Unfortunately, we don't have a ton of time, like she mentioned, to think about. We're really just to spend a lot of time. It's kind of just going to be what are the pros and the cons? And how much could this basically startup grant benefit us fiscally now and in the future? After tonight, if the decision is yes, then we will continue those next steps. But right now we're kind of at a standstill until we hear it from the board. Why are we excited for pre-K in this district? I mean, not just because it will be adorable and fun and bring a lot of joy. But that last board meeting, we talked about, you know, research continues to underscore the benefits of pre-K for all kiddos in terms of academic, social, and emotional gains. And I won't read everything that's up there. In addition, it also has some economic benefits for communities in terms of reducing special education referrals. Also has some beneficial economic advantages for families. Often sometimes that choice between entering the workforce and paying for private pre-K can cancel each other out. So often that's a barrier for families to enter the workforce. Unfortunately, not all students have equal access to pre-K. And the gap between children who come from environments rich and. And the gap between children who come from environments rich in conversation, vocabulary, diverse experiences, and those who do not is often significant. Offering pre K to all students provides a critical opportunity to narrow the achievement gap and better prepare prepare children with the foundational skills they will need for long term success. And that's not just academic literacy and numeracy, that's social emotional skills, self regulation, uh peers, uh executive functioning. And just for context, our current kindergarten class, about forty percent, so almost half, did not have um pre K before entering this year. So we're excited. It would be fun. And also, research is clear. It's very beneficial. We showed this slide last time. About eighty-six percent of the schools in Maine already offer pre K. We're one of the few and small percentage that does not yet. And these are to some of our neighbors who some have offered pre K for many, many years, such as Marshwood, um, and some who are newer to it, and we are hoping to join them. I don't know if you had the chance to read over the grant, but we proposed a full day program. It would be twelve to sixteen students per class. Um, that would be one teacher and one ed tech. There would be two classrooms at the Huzi School to service our Berwick four year olds. Two classrooms at Noble High School that would service our North Berwick four year olds. There isn't any room there. Um, and we also know that there is no room in Lebanon. So the the grant did promote partnering with a local childcare or daycare facility. And we were fortunate to partner um with Blueprints. So there'll be two classes there for four year olds in Lebanon. And we can see later after we talk, I'm sure there'll be a ton of questions and Denise and Sue and Audra and AJ and I can answer more of those. But I'm gonna let Mr. Dufour kind of talk about the finance piece and just what this opportunity could do for us. And if we don't do it, thinking about all those startup costs that we would kind of accrue on our own eventually, when we would do that. I will hand my end space over.
Yes.
And I want to apologize.
Thank you very much.
I understand this is an eye test and I'd like to have handed out magnifying glasses to go with it. But one thing that is important and don't, there's no need to worry a ton because and propose that that may not have this copy. I think it is important to see the three years on one page next to each other um so that you can kind of see. Because again, it's great to have a grant, the startup. But what are the long term sustainable possibilities of this? I think that absolutely has to be taken into account that this can't just be a one year and then what? So it was really important to look out. So a couple of things that are important to note on here. Um, and it's broken down in this first year when we would have access to those grant funds. It's important just to break out that there are parts and pieces of this that are not covered by the grant, both because the grant has an upper limit of amount of money that we were awarded and also because the grant did stipulate that certain items could not be placed into the grant for that reimbursement. So you will see um personnel, that is teacher costs, that first line. The next cost down is ed techs, um, so having an ed tech in each of the classrooms. And then you have the instructional materials, which I think that is huge, that all of your startup instructional materials would be covered by the grant in that first year, because that is going to be the bulk of the money that's spent. A lot of those materials will last way more than a year. Next is technology costs. And again, technology costs were one of those items who are not covered by the grant. Um, so there would be some needs in in the area of technology. Classroom equipment, playground equipment were both covered by the grant. And again, that is a huge startup expense and expense that the district would not need to incur in that first year to get a program up and running. There would be some work that would have to happen as far as classroom retrofitting. So making sure spaces spaces in buildings were not, you know, say, for example, in Noble High School, many years ago, we did have the Head Start Program that was part of SRPC, but there have been some changes to that space that we would have to put back. And so those funds would allow that to happen immediately and be ready to go on day one. Transportation costs. And so that's that's one I'd like to talk just for a second about because it's not going to be an incurred cost as far as transporting preschoolers. The incurred cost is going to be retrofitting the seats to have the harness system to provide the maximum safety for preschoolers. So that amount of money, the thirty thousand dollars would allow us immediately to retrofit all school buses that would be part of those runs to pick up preschoolers in each of the three communities to be optimally safe for that age groups. And again, that would be one of those costs that over time would not need to continue to be incurred. Um, professional development, year one would be covered and I think would be essential given the model as well. So not only are we gonna be bringing in pre pre K teachers and pre K ed techs, we are gonna be working and collaborating with Blueprints. And so making sure folks are on the same page, making sure there's consistency among the program, consistency among the training is going to be important. Potential, uh, I think the other piece that is really important is that we have transparency. So as a district, we are potentially going to need some related services anyways because our numbers are being maximized among our occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech therapists. Those positions are being maximized as it is. But it's also important that the addition of pre K is gonna make that a necessity. It it was one of those that was a need to an absolutely have to have because we're raising our number of students by in year one and we're projecting seventy-five. So that pushes it into need to absolutely have to need to move forward. So although all of those costs wouldn't necessarily be attributed to pre K for sort of transparency sake, it that would be a requirement in order to successfully move on with this program. And then the other, which is the fee um for Blueprints annually for twenty-four students to be able to attend. So that is that amount there um that you see. And again, in year one, the grant would cover that fee in its entirety. So as you add up totals, and again, that the bottom line, you know, again, I think we all recognize that pre K would be great. But there is the question, is pre K financially feasible for the district? And is it something we are able to commit to long term? And so when you look in year one, again, I I'm not gonna and I'm probably not going to promise to come out in the green because of pre K. I think I feel very confident that a break even is is going to happen at worst. You know, because when you factor in our projected state subsidy from bringing on pre K students and you add that to the grant, we're going to come up over the one point oh nine nine million, one point one million or around it too. So there would be, again, likely a financial benefit, not a windfall, but a financial benefit in year one. Obviously, and when you look in year two, many or some of the costs decrease because we would not need, for example, the same level of instructional materials, technology, classroom equipment, playground equipment, the whole and the the plan would be for the materials to to live on well longer than than year one. So we have them moving forward. But we did factor in some costs, the cost of people is going to go up. The cost of, um, you know, we projected a cost increase at the blueprint just to be safe. So we've tried to take into account factors at play here to make sure that we're providing you the most accurate numbers to make an informed decision.
I think another piece to note is that typically often is what's is the pattern is there's a delay in us getting our subsidy for our students. And um during that meeting that we had prior to Thanksgiving, uh, they're going to release the money for pre K students that subsidy ahead. So we don't have all this lag time. So we will be getting it in, you know, in real time of when we need it, which is why we're confident, you know, with that that breaking even at worst.
Right, exactly.
Can you talk a little bit about the blueprint relationship? I'm assuming that they do hiring and and management of the staff that will be there.
They would. That is correct. I think we would want, because it's advantageous, they're they're our future students and there's certainly a willingness to work together. So I think items like the professional development, there's been a an interest, you know, and again, so much of this is still at the starting level, but there's absolutely been an interest in collaborating and having those individuals be a part because there's lots of learning that can happen on both ends.
And they're going to follow a similar curriculum that would that we will be doing in the schools. And um, you know, they will partner with Lebanon, so hands school um and work with the principal and the assistant principal of Lebanon, similar to, you know, if it was house. So while they are doing some hiring and with tuition, there's still gonna be that part of to put in the school so that when our students transition, when the pre K students transition into the school, they'll have, you know, they'll have the similar experiences to the other pre K programs and move in.
And they're currently sending, um, they have a pre K program already and they're already sending our the kindergartners. So they so the students that are coming in from Blueprints are, uh, it's showing that things are.
Uh, can you give more information about that? Like what? So Blueprints is a private nursery school right now, preschool right now, right? So what what uh? What are they required to do as being part of this grant or a school system? What are they giving up as a private entity in order to be be part of this? Because I know there are other there are other preschool programs in our community, not just Blueprints. And I'm wondering. So the the first question is, what are they giving up? And were the other preschool programs not, did they not want to give up that autonomy? Um, okay, explain that, that that.
Is this the end of the presentation? Um, I think we're at the question stage. So okay, is this, I hope my questions are up there, like should be returned? Is it appropriate for us to return up there?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Oh, so it's gonna be.
Do you want to talk a little bit about how it ended up?
Sure. Yes. Um, so the fact that preschool has been sort of on the radar in this in the in the state basically and kind of mandating um has been a while. So it's been a while. And the actually the owner of the Blueprints um program, it has reached out to us a couple of different times to say, if we get to a place where there's actually an opportunity for us to collaborate, we I would I'd like to be part of that conversation because it is kind of her passion that she, like, those four four year olds are her her passion. She also recognizes that regardless of what um long term, preschools are going into the public schools at some point. And so she really wanted to be part of that conversation and and moving forward. Um, the reality for Lebanon, and yes, there are other um preschools or actually there are other daycares in our in our whole district. Um, she's actually one of the few that has the the ratings to a certain level that the state is looking for for us to be partnering with. Um, there's there are one, two, three stars. And she's working on her, she's at the two star level, working to her three star level. And I couldn't tell you exactly what that actually looks like because I don't have a, I'm not a full into that. But that's like what that's what we were looking for too, is partnering with um a program that was uh moving forward fundamentally with like making sure that they're meeting the state requirements that we're looking for. Um, so the other problem or or issue in terms of our Lebanon situation is that there is no space in our buildings. So um, this particular program is now housed in a building that's that's pretty, um, it's there's a lot of room, a lot of room.
Very spacious.
Yeah, it's the old back to basics.
Yeah, if you know that. Right on Depot Road.
Yep.
Um, and so a lot of our students actually get on the bus there because she does a lot of pre um before and after care programming as well. So that was, that's really where this original kind of conversation started from. And the other um, the other two towns, because we do have room in our buildings, we were we're looking at these in in a different way, basically. Um, the other part I think that's important is that um this collaboration with our with our preschools in the area, it is important, like we do need to have these conversations with folks and let that like, I think it's not a surprise at all in the um childcare um realm that that preschools are going into into the public schools. So I think that's where where we're at.
That's what someone was telling me, that a lot of these preschools have waiting lists.
Huge.
That kids, they want to be able to, but they are just full, you know, so.
So and that was something that she shared with us. And we didn't, I'll be honest with you, we didn't dig like, we didn't go to the Berwick Learning and say, Learning Center and say, how many kiddos do you have on your waitlist? Um, but we did talk with her about, because also it's a business impact for her, right? So as our as our schools are hopefully absorbing these pre K kiddos, that's a that's a business impact to to all of our daycares in the area. Um, so, but that's happening now. Like it is definitely happening now. Our, we have in our Berwick world, we have folks going to Berwick to Marshwood. That is not going to be an opportunity this coming year. They've um, they've already told us that there would probably be no room in the inn for for kiddos from the from M S C D sixty. So we're just feeling that we need to, and again, you know, here's the bottom line. If we feel like this is not feasible for us as a board, as you're, is that's the decision for the board? That's the decision tonight and we will move forward into a different, like, we're just, we're just gonna end this conversation and move on because we have other things to think about. But if we do have the opportunity to take these funds um and move forward, develop a program that we really I think would be beneficial to the district, we're gonna go for it.
And so the it's continued state subsidy a year after this?
So this grant is a one year grant.
Right.
This is the startup grant. Then those students are then counted on state subsidy for, so they're they're in our, they're our child count, right? Our October one child.
So am I, am I correct that from twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, the next two years, it's like about a three hundred thousand dollar cost to the district?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, which is interesting because when you look at the actual cost for only twenty-four kids to go to private preschool, it's twenty, it's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for those parents, but they would have to pay twenty-four people. I mean, that's like horribly burdensome for the community. So I'm all behind this. Like, I couldn't be more behind this. I think this is the kind of thing that uplifts communities and so, yeah, you know, I still.
Not to throw a wet blanket on this, but um this is gonna serve as about forty percent of our kindergarten population.
As a starting point.
As a starting point, the price for the next three years is still based on that forty percent of our population. What are we gonna do with the other sixty? Well, so a couple of things, right? We, this is a full day program. Some um families may feel like they don't want a full day program and may choose to continue in a private um preschool program that's half day. Um, they may choose not to send their students in yet. This is a starting point for us. This is an entry point for us. We don't yet have our facilities study in, so we, you know, just protect projected out a few years. But ideally, our end goal is universal pre K, right? So for everybody, yes, this is the stepping stone.
It's similar to what we did with like all day K because.
Well, I remember with, this is the same story we had when we did kindergarten. It went on for a number of years.
Yeah.
Finally, everybody had kindergarten half day and then they added it full day. And now we're doing four year olds and next it'll be the three year olds.
Yep.
And then it'll be the.
Probably not. I know.
So a little concerning going down that road, but but my big concern is this is a stepping stone. It services, I don't know, ninety, about ninety kids, eighty, eighty-two kids maybe. And we have two hundred and eighteen kids in our kindergarten this year, so we're looking at a big number. And I think you said last two weeks ago that forty-seven percent of our kids are in preschool, which is making an impact on the kindergarten. But wouldn't we have to go to two million, three? But wouldn't we have to go to $2 million, $3 million? And I don't know what the state subsidy is gonna be on these kids, but when we have to spend, put out in the budget $3 million to service all of the kids, that's a, that's a big chunk of change.
But, but remember, eventually, we're gonna be required to do it. And as it goes up, your subsidy is going up, so maybe 5% increase the next year, 5% the next year, your subsidy is going to increase.
Yep. Let's talk about that kindergarten program that we got in 15 years ago and see how that worked out. So, no, it's just, it's a huge chunk of change, and I believe it said that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the state doesn't mandate unless they can subsidize.
Well.
I don't know. I don't know what.
It's always been true.
Well, it is what they say, it just doesn't.
So I think what they're doing is, they've backed off the mandating, because they can't subsidize. But what they're doing is strongly encouraging districts to move ahead with pre-K. And they're doing things like this expansion grant. We just don't know when and if there's going to be another one.
Right.
So that's that. But what we do know for certain is that our Child Development Services, our students, we will be responsible for our students that are receiving early intervention, three years old to five years old, by 2028.
Yeah. Can I ask a question about that too? We don't service those kids now in the state of Maine?
We do. The Child Development Services does it. It's a separate agency. They're.
Pay, isn't that a, are we subsidizing that as well? And we have to pay for the students that are going.
So through your tax dollars, yes.
No, I mean.
But through the public school, we don't do that.
And then the public school doesn't do it.
Right. Right. It's separate agencies.
Okay.
And we do work in conjunction, so like Waypoint, and there's, Waypoint's the old Waban.
So we'll be pulling them back in here.
Yeah, we're gonna be.
How many, how many kids are being, um?
Well, where's our friends? They're not in the audience right now. Um, I don't have the numbers.
Seventy-seven students, three to five right now.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that's.
Yes.
Well, a question and a comment. Question for, like, Blueprint, so they do, or they'll need to do, if they're not already doing the same kind of background checks, that sort of.
Yes, yes, yes. They'd have, like, yes.
And then my comment is, I agree with Alison. I'm wholeheartedly behind this, because it is one of the ways that we actually work to get our scores up.
Yeah.
As improved performance students that have meaningful preschool experiences.
Is there, sorry, I called back. Is there a way, um, like, so are we prioritizing low-income families for this?
Yeah, we'll do like a weighted lottery.
Okay.
For until it becomes universal. A lot of our neighboring districts have done it, so we're looking at how they did it right now and how they score. But yeah, it would be like prioritizing socioeconomic, students with disabilities, et cetera.
Can you talk a little bit more about the weighted lottery? I know, just like.
So, um, when parents fill out a registration form, they'll be asked specific questions about, um, their child's needs, whether they have particular needs, about income, about, really, of socioeconomic learning disabilities. Who lives at home? Do they live with a grandparent, an aunt, a mckitty, vento, homeless? Things that we would assume in highways. And then when you think about private pre-K, and just that slide, when I talked about the gap between the students who have these experiences with rich vocabulary and diverse experiences, and the students that don't, often, you know, these families cannot pay. So we would love the opportunity for every four-year-old in the Noble District to be provided this rich opportunity.
Good question, Lauren. Got you, got you.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, two questions. I'm really curious about this, uh, this, um, three-to-five-year-olds, you saying it's coming down 2028. Like, what is our current involvement with identified three-to-five-year-olds? Like, does our district have any involvement whatsoever?
We do, but, um, most of that occurs in the spring of the, uh, when they're ready to come into kindergarten. And we go and we spend some time observing them in their current location. We have transfer meetings. We meet with families. We talk with families. Families come in for tours of the buildings. Um, so in that regard, we do. We also get updated lists, spreadsheets, information, reports from Child Development Services on students that are in our district that qualify for earlier intervention services. Um, so that, that's the level right now.
So follow up with that. In 2020, are we required to house those students? Or are we required to provide the services for those students?
It's probably gonna be a combination. I think with some of the students that have, um, more significant needs, they will probably need to be in, in the school setting because of the amount of services they're going to need.
Because they have, okay. So one more question and then a comment. Um, so do, do we, do we actually have data? Like, have we been, have we been, um, tracking our data for the students who have attended preschool versus students who have not attended preschool that, that you could share with us? Like, I'd love to, I mean, we have the thought that they do, but do they really? I mean, I know there's a number of parents who choose to keep their kids home and educate them, and they do a fantastic job. And, uh, you know, so do we actually have that data separated out that, that could be looked at?
For tonight, we don't.
Right.
Um, but what I, so I can give you an overall statement, and then we can, we can sift through some of that information for you. I will say, um, when you screen for kindergarten, for the dial screening for incoming kindergarten students, there is a noticeable difference in students that, just similar to what Dr. Swiger said about that language-rich, those experiences or those pre-K experiences versus students that don't have those opportunities coming in, and you see it right at that get-go. And then, then we have kindergarten jumpstart that we offer, and we do see a marked improvement with that program. But that is very small compared to a pre-K program. So, you know, we can extrapolate and try to follow students all the way through. Um, and some of that record-keeping may be hard, because it's not electronic. So we would have to look through every single file and look at, you know, the parent registration forms.
So, so comment, and I, I understand that dial, my, my experience has been, with exposure, that all washes out. So by third grade, it's, your students who had identified needs as a three, four-year-old, right? Typically come out on the data as struggling, right? I mean, they've identified at that point, and they typically are struggling. But those who, it was simply exposure, they just didn't get pre-K, are doing very well by third, fourth, fifth grade. So I'd just be very interested in that third, fourth, fifth grade data for those students who didn't attend pre-K versus those who did, and the differences of that. Again, it's not a matter of, uh, you know, digging through paper. I'm just, it's a very, it's a curious question, right? We claim it, but do we actually see it? And then, so generally, I, I'm, I'm not in favor. I much prefer community-owned pre-Ks. They, they run it. It's personal. There's a lot of pride in those preschool programs. My own daughters went to private, um, preschool programs. And, and yes, I mean, it, it, there is a cost associated with it. That is, that is true. You know, but I also know that the same preschool programs that sent carnations to their graduates when they graduated high school, um, to wear on their gowns, because they were so attached to these kids. It wasn't part of the school system. They were part of a family. And I, and I just feel a school district competing, um, with those private entities just, just isn't fair. Um, I'd much rather see our, our community, parents work all over the place. And I, I know, I, I work with teachers in Summersworth who bring their kids to the Berwick preschool, because, you know, they can't, on their way to work, however, that doesn't, it doesn't work. I mean, they're, they don't, they don't live in North Berwick, right? So we have, we have preschools here in Noble, right, who have kids from other school districts, right? So, um, I just, just so many questions here. I, I am for, just generally, um, those students who, who are identified. I am for figuring out how we can provide better services for them at a young age. I am all for that. And, and if this grant, if, if this grant was targeted to that population and figuring out how we could create something targeted for that population, I, I would be supportive of it. But on a general whole, I'm not, it's, it's competing against private interests in our, in our community. You know, the fact that we're partnering with one preschool and not all preschools, I think, is, is something to just have, certainly a question about. Yeah, I understand what you said. It doesn't appear like they're giving up every, they're giving up anything. They have full autonomy, except they're receiving a very large check from the district. Those, those are my concerns, right? Those are my concerns. Those are my comments. Thank you.
I would, I would just add a little bit more, if I could, about the autonomy. They have to work closely with our other programs, so that they are mirroring the outcomes that we are providing for our students. So in that regard, the autonomy is not a blanket autonomy. They're also going to be having close collaboration with, with the principals and the staff and the students at Hanson School. So I, I, I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. Lauren, you've been so patient.
Yeah. You've answered half my questions, so I'm apologizing now for kind of being all over the place. I love the math in this AJ person too, so thank you for that. You know, anytime you can break even with a new program or come close one way or the other, like, that's always, you know, that's, that's huge. That's, you know, a rare opportunity. And I'm hearing from parents now with kids who are at home who need CDS services, that they won't be seen unless they're in a public setting. So like, I love how this provides that opportunity, because, um, CDS is overrun right now and with too many cases to be able to keep up with, um, from what I'm hearing.
That's a correct statement, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, so, and the, that could maybe have, like, high school potential with the kids, you know, or working with the kids for, you know, early childhood programs or things like that. My questions are, definitely, I would really like to know more about the Lebanon program. If half of the grant money is, so. And I have no opinion on this. I'm just making a topic point, I guess. Um, we've had a lot of talks this board about equity, so that half the grant money is going towards one specific, um, set of kiddos. Um, just a comment. Um, but, so would the other teachers be, at the other two schools, be on teaching contracts and these, and would these, would Lebanon be subcontractors? Would they be on the con, like, how would you have teacher equity? Like, they're all getting paid, they're getting a large sum of money. How would we have equity and not end up with, like, a union grievance or things like that, if, like, to keep that all even, fair? So you have to also, in terms of the, that funding that goes specifically to the Lebanon pieces, that's all-inclusive of everything, as opposed to us looking at, um, our teaching staff. Cause like, they would provide food. We wouldn't provide the food. So there's, like, there's, there's pieces that are probably, like, it's just, it's just part of that deal. But, you know, yeah.
But she would have to hire more staff.
Right.
Right. So it's like, she's, you know, that's quite a cost.
Yes, yeah.
Would the salaries be comparable? I guess that's my question. Is that, that gonna be the same for whether we hire them?
So currently, their, her salaries are not exactly like ours. So there's a differential that probably would need to be made for her, because private pay does not pay as high as public school.
Right.
Typically, typically, it just doesn't. So in order for things to sort of be at that even level, yes, you know? And for the requirements for certification, right? Because students need to be.
I think, Denise, you wanna?
I just wanted to add that the $300,000, if you add as the cost of two teachers and two ed techs in that town, it would be approximately $300,000.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's a fair point. Yeah. That's a fair point. Thank you. Um, I would have, in hearing about public pre-K, I really would have hoped this would have created fewer transitions for kiddos. I got something here, um, or I've heard a lot about, is that the fewer transitions, the better developmentally for kids. And now in Lebanon, this is gonna add three transitions instead of their two. Berwick will stay at two, and North Berwick is now three instead of two. Um, so that's just.
Well, it's, it's not space, so I mean.
I know, no, I know, I know. These are just comments and things to think about. And like, while it's doing a wonderful thing, is it causing other challenges in the long term with, you know, comfort anxiety, all that kind of stuff? And then, just kind of following up on community relations, this, I feel like would be a much easier conversation if, like, the grant application said that you guys had a survey ready to go out. Like, it would have been really nice if that survey had gone out, so we had some feedback for tonight.
We didn't have time.
But it was two weeks, and you could have seen what you could have gotten.
We do have a survey ready to go out.
Yeah, but we have to have our answer beforehand, right? Yes, that's a challenge. Um, and then if we are having, um, awaited enrollment to the income special needs, et cetera, I know a typical private preschool has, it's pretty standard, from what I've seen with my kids and friends, for there to be 12 kids with two teachers, um, with not many needs. Do we think that one teacher and one ed tech, knowing that we're doing awaited enrollment, is truly going to serve these kids as best as we can?
As of right now, yes. I mean, I would think, we're probably gonna say the same thing. Go ahead.
Well, just to qualify what those two teachers are, like, we would be a certified public school teacher and a, and a certified ed tech.
Yeah.
And I don't know, and I'm not, I do not venture to guess what the qualifications are for preschools that are, that are playing. But from conversations that we've had with, um, the Blueprints folks, it's not a certified teacher now, so they need to do that. And so I think, yes, I think the quality will be similar or maybe increased, hopefully. I mean, and like, not the quality of the humans, we know they're all great, but be giving them more, more, um, professional development. And then, um, I think the last one was just kind of touching upon what Josh said of like, did we have a chance, or did we even talk to other private preschools to give them this similar opportunity? Like, I get, obviously, there's many benefits, and I don't know that we have another, uh, facility. And I, I've heard amazing things about Blueprints. I have never been. I have no idea what it looks like. But it sounds like it's close to the schools. It's, you know, a, a whole different piece. It's not like it's in someone's house or that whole kind of thing. Um, but just, you know.
I think it, where it gets complex is that this is the biggest one in Lebanon, right? And to your point about home childcare, daycares, we could, we couldn't partner with as, that many of them. And they have, every childcare has, has a rating, you know, most, most, other than some of the smaller ones that are in the house, have a rating. And we had to look and, and really reach out and connect with those that had some of those ratings that were moving toward that, that standard of, of that piece. And we know that she will be there by the end of this, you know, by the end of spring. Yeah, so, yeah.
I just wanted to see it. I have a question and a comment. Ms. Jenny, which is, wow, I know her, has been doing this for years. She must be very, very skilled in what she does. So, I mean, she's just been doing preschool and nursery school forever. But I'm curious about the special ed population. So we send our special ed population to, I say we, SAD-60 sends it to a private program.
Are you talking about your three-to-five-year-olds?
Yes.
So, so Child Development Services is a statewide organization. And so, um, if students are identified to be receiving, needing services, they are then, like, they're, they're case-managed, basically.
They go into the home?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're getting their services in the.
Some of them are getting them in the home. Some of them happen in.
Like a Waban?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Something like that.
Right, the more profound ones.
Yes.
Speech, language, the OT, they're getting their services in the home.
Either in the home, or there are private practices that, um, like Karen Knight in Lebanon. Yep, Karen, like, they, so she sees CDS kiddos in her practice.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll contract.
So I'm assuming that the identified students right now are in, they're being serviced, because if they're identified, they.
No, the way, CDS is having a lot of trouble finding service providers. So there are students, to Lauren's point, that could be identified at two years old or one years old as needing some speech and language services that don't receive anything until they come into school. They're on a waitlist for years.
Okay.
Yeah, again, which is a bummer. I guess.
Are you done? Um, you, I can.
Okay.
So, I mean, if we were to have the preschool programs, we would then hire those services? As AJ, I think you said that we would have to hire those services, those personnel, right? Which then means even less services out in the community for those who have their kids at home, who decide to keep their kids with them and raise them. Like, we're then depleting even that, that available population even more. And I, I think that these are the things, we have to understand the, the impact, right? Schools have an incredible, huge impact on that. And I, I just wanted to bring that up, like, so if we hire those people to be part of our school district, then they don't service anyone else, right? They only service the kids that are in our school district.
So what I would say to that is, when we have, we've hired recently, speech and language therapists, occupational therapists, um, some support for PT. And, um, they're not coming from private practice. They're not coming from CDS. The applicants that we're getting are not coming from that, that pool of staff that are working with that, that population.
Good to know.
I think it's also just important to keep in mind that that's a point of extreme privilege to be able to go to a private school. We're not, when you add a public option, you're not adding competition for those private schools. You're giving the people that weren't going to be able to send their kids to a private daycare an option to either choose to re-enter the workforce or just to have a place for their kids to go. I mean, personally, my son was three. He didn't talk and he didn't eat food. Literally didn't drink water, because he had such sensory issues. And until he went to a pre-K where he saw. because he had such sensory issues. And until he went into a pre-K where he saw other kids doing it, that was what drove him to do it. So like the developmental advantages are, can't be overstated. And just the equity point of like, those same people that want that family feel that are able to afford it, they're still gonna go there. You know, we're not saying they can't go there. We're just giving an option for the people who can't. Which is, there's plenty of people that can't. Any other comments?
Yep. Okay, um, my last two, I think. Um, so who would be the, um, the appropriate administrator responsible for each group of kits? Like if the.
So overall.
Yeah.
Dr. Swiger.
Okay.
And then in the buildings, it would be, again, for Lebanon, it would be the principal and the assistant principal. At Huzzy School, it would be the Huzzy School principal and assistant principal. North Burwick would be the principal and assistant principal for North Burwick. And, and, and possibly Mr. Dufour.
Play with the kids. Like if Huzzy, you know, had to add an extra section of third grade, you know what I mean? It's just. Yes, I get that, but when they're in a whole different, that's my, that's my concern. Um, you know, with any kind of, of course, they're gonna be beautiful, a little angel four-year-olds that are never gonna have any kind of issue, but if and when they need to be addressed, kind of who's that person right there for them to go to? Because at that age, they do need to go right then and there. Um, to, to, you know, correlate the, the, what they did to the results. Um, and say who you said for Lebanon again, it would still be.
It would be Heatherin.
Okay, sorry. Um, and then just confirming that enrollment at Blueprints will still be done by MSAD sixty and the kids will just be held there. That it will still be by the weighted program. It will still be, it's not that Blueprint was doing the enrolling. MSAD sixty is still doing the enrolling with our weighted system and everything. So.
Yes.
Okay, so there.
There will be, we will give a little weight if they were, if they're already there as a three-year-old. We would give a little weight for that. But that doesn't mean that that's gonna usurp the other weights, weights. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Would we ever consider, I know, I don't think we can change anything on the grant right now. It's a full day pre-K, I mean, four-year-old. But we could almost cover all of our pre-Ks if we did half-days. And what if we switched it to half-days after we used up the grant money?
We, we, we can certainly explore that. However, for the grant, if it was a half-day program, we would have been only able.
No, I know. We had, I understand with that, but I really think, I just think we're, we're spending an awful lot of money for a very small percent, not a small, but that percentage needs to be a lot bigger. And yeah, some of these parents will send their kids to pre, and half-days kindergarten. Pre-K, sorry. Like you can tell I'm aging, but but even if they got a half-day of pre-K, they'd be way ahead of the game, which brings me to my other question. Is there any chance that we might have end-of-year data on first grade, a kindergarten, about where they, where they ended? To see if we close that, how much we close that gap, because I suspect we closed it. Like they did with.
A lot of data points, not just academic, like the point is.
Yeah, I'm okay with whatever, but I'm just, I think that, that we, when we did kindergarten a hundred years ago, we closed the gap. It wasn't easy, but we closed the gap. So I'm thinking, again, do we want to spend the extra money to get everybody into pre-K when our teachers probably can close the gap? Maybe they already are. I just would like to know if we, if we have the data. I'd like to know. I think, you know, I'd like data anyway, you know? I want to go on that PBIS thing. Pretty fun to me.
Any other questions, discussion?
No, just for a comment, if to, to Josh's point, I just Googled um, success, pros and cons of pre-K and there's a lot to look at.
And research.
Yeah, there is. And a lot of it has followed these kids through college and proved, proven them to be statistically more successful and less likely to drop out. There, there's a lot, there's a lot.
Say motion. And then, and then more discussion and then we vote. Are we ready? Are we at that?
It's hard. And we're, um, you know, apologies that we're having to push this a little fast, but we will take the direction of the board.
Motion. Let me move forward. Second. Oops, second. Alan. Any further discussion?
I like the math this year. The next couple of years worry me, but the math this year really working. It'll be a challenge. Yeah. Denise said something.
Oh, there she is, there she is.
I'm sorry to interrupt this process. I just would say, um, we have to make sure during the budget process that we are also behind this and not just tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's.
Great. And I, and I also want to say, I'm sorry, I didn't say this earlier. If we, if you decide tonight that you are going to move ahead in two weeks, if we say we can't, like if you, if the board changes the mind, their, your mind, we are going to be in jeopardy at the, at the DOE of not rece, we're gonna be looked at poorly because we are taking somebody's money and then we're giving it back too late. And there's not, they're not gonna be able to.
Be sent.
Right.
They're working on time to get some.
And I just wanted full disclosure. That's not any kind of pressure. It's just reality.
Yeah.
It's just a reality.
Yeah. It might have to really be true. I would want to do this.
But Josh.
Um, if this were to go through, how many years are we obligated to follow the, the, the grant as it's written?
The one-year grant.
One year.
The chef startup, they don't follow it after that.
The grant will use it for the first year.
And then after the, there's no strings, there's nothing, you, we can do what we want with the materials.
Yeah.
The technology, et cetera.
All the materials and equipment and things are federally federal funds. Uh, the general strings with that come with bigger equipment that we buy, which we have to track its location for the life of the item. And when we dispose of it, there's our different rules. Um, but I think the grant itself is not tying us to going forward in the same format.
Oh, yeah.
But you can discuss if that's a, that's a, a change is something you'd be looking for or something, but.
Would that be part of the contract that you have to sign? I mean, I saw that you have to negotiate a contract. Oh, so we don't even really.
We have been to go, we have to have a memo, memorandum of, of understanding with Blueprints. And then we have to sign contracts, but we, we don't do that until you act. And if you act, then yes.
And it is not a, there's, at this point, from reading everything that we have, it is not anything beyond the one-year implementation.
No, I was just surprised when it said you gotta negotiate a contract. Pretty, I mean, it's pretty cut and dried here, but.
Didn't, it won't be difficult, right?
Did you have? Again, just to Nancy's point, if we wanted to, could we go to half-day?
After this year.
The following year.
The following year, yeah.
Or at least offer an option of it, like a day and full day or something.
Right, right.
But yeah, yes, yes.
Thank you. I don't know who was next.
Josh, I think. Big Josh.
So it's also possible, right, hypothetically, that we could communicate with other preschools and give them the same opportunity that Blueprint has and say, hey, you got like a year and eighteen months or, or, or what are you working towards? And, and we could also move in that direction potentially.
In one town in Lebanon. Because we have the space in North Burwick. We have the space in Burwick. So it would be Lebanon.
Cause the only reason they're using the Lebanon one is because there's no space in the schools.
Get three points for that.
On your.
Did get extra points.
We did a, it was three points. Big. It really was big, yeah.
Oops, what's right? Lauren has questions.
Okay. Um, so if this, if this vote does pass, can we just do, make sure that we do a really, really great job putting it out to the public that this is a trial one-year because of the grant? So parents aren't like, peace out daycare, I'm off your waitlist. Like I'm relying on that, like, and just, and making big changes because I know that, I believe that happened in other districts and I just want to make sure that we're like very upfront, like this is a trial one-year.
And one of the, one of the benefits of Hittery just started and York just started this year. So really relying on their, um, what to do, you know, what went well and what, what learning happened. We will rely on that if, if this moves ahead. Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, the motion on the floor is to move ahead with the pre-K program, right?
To accept, accept the state of main grant, yeah.
And the step, accept the state of main grant.
Okay.
Can we just edit that because we've, we've just talked, it's, it's a one-year. I don't know if we're able to put that in there that we, we are because to your point, right, let's communicate, let's communicate through our motion. Um, that we are, we are, we're not committed to preschool and definitely we're committed to preschool for one year, um, because of this grant.
Okay. So I will amend it to say, if this is okay, um, accept the one-year state of being grant for preschool.
Is that okay with whoever made the motion?
Is that okay?
Cause that's, you have to agree to that if you're, if that.
That was you.
Yeah, and is that gonna, I know with some of these grants, the intent is for these to be an ongoing programs. Is it going to be okay with the grant program if we say, if we.
Denise, did you?
I, I mean, I.
I would be concerned about that.
I believe that their intent is to give us startup money to keep how they could take them ahead with pre-K.
And withdraw that.
Which does not stop you from, from not continuing, but I would be concerned about, you might want to continue with half-day. Right. You know what I mean? So not getting rid of the whole thing.
I don't think we want it in the motion.
No.
You have the right to just say, you know, I don't want to include that.
I wouldn't, yeah, I would not put the amendment in. I just think it.
I think, yeah, and it, and.
Just to accept grant, accept the grant for.
The state of main grant for preschool and, and it's actually a state of main expansion grant, right, is what they call it. So maybe we just label it as it is for this, because it's a one-shot deal.
Okay, you want to read that again for me?
Sure. Um, I think we're back to, um, Ms. Wheeler made the motion, it was seconded by Ms. Harlehi to accept the state of main expansion grant for preschool. Or I'll put for FY twenty six.
Okay, all those in favor of, of this motion? Okay. Okay, all those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And you will. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to number five.
Thank you, Shannon.
Really number. We really are almost at the end, but we're on number five. Uh, board goes with a motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you. We have too much reading material.
I know. Do you need glasses?
I, I want my hussy cape for this.
Yep, yes.
Count as my twenty minutes of reading and I.
Said, yeah.
Oh, I'd like you to. Um, yes. Um, this hearing, last time we met, um, the part about the, um, and how there was some evidence, assumption of evidence, uh, so just formatted this differently. All of the components that we've talked about are all in here. However, we did add the mission statement and we did, um, talk about the introduction because, um, as we have discussed, we had a lot of input and we wanted to capture that through the introduction. So we talked about, you know, our mission statement, the introduction of how we got the strategic plan, the four pillars that were focused on, and then we go right into the timeline and the tactics, steps and evidence. And, um, there's a little end note that just says the evidence will be added to the tactic steps and evidence section. Column when updates have been addressed at the meeting. So we'll take the live document and we'll just use a different font to just do some updates. I think that matches the SMART goal. I, I think it, it matches the SMART goal intent. Practice for evidence intent.
I love this. It's so easy to read and seen and.
Yep, yep.
Oh, the stretch goal of eighty percent.
We, we.
What's that?
Yes.
So, um, this is. Oh, by quality resources.
Sure. So, um, by quality resources.
Yeah, the by June twenty twenty-six, implement a facilities plan that's after the study is done, that they're doing this year.
Right.
By twenty twenty-six, come up with a.
Right, not.
Okay.
Uh, there's gonna be budgetary, you know.
Right.
Hard to it, so we won't get there, but we'll at least be able to identify the plan. Sorry, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, under Pathways to Success, there, there any interest in, um, instance, the second bullet by June twenty twenty-six, MSAD sixty will increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding state expectations on the mandated main through your assessment in math and literacy by ten percent? Can, can we include the baseline, like, you know, twenty-five is this percent twenty, you know, in half reading?
We considered that and we can certainly add that. The problem was that became third, fourth, fifth, you know, all the grade levels. So it just would make that a very lengthy goal and we can certainly do that. That's not a problem.
But we could.
An addendum.
So we can put a link in it, maybe.
Right.
Yeah, do that.
Maybe, maybe a suggestion, a way of doing it, because, um, my hope is that we're gonna, we're gonna talk about these on a regular basis. When you're bringing that data to us, can you bring in the chart where, where baseline is?
Yeah.
This is the twenty, you know, for this grade level and then we can track that.
We can even just put something in here that's like in parentheses, just, um, based on.
I mean, you could just put the numbers in order, a grade level.
Right, right, right.
No, you know?
Yeah, okay. Yes, we can add that.
Um, on that same goal, it's ten percent, increase it by ten percent. Are we increasing it? We know that the, um, oh, if I get the third grade, is it's third grade? No, it's. Are we increasing the percentage by ten percent or are we increasing the number of students who have made state expectations by ten percent? That's what I, it's a different number.
Increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding state.
So the number of students that meet, so that would be approximately by each grade level, it would be six or seven kids would be achieving. And I, I think I need to just remind everybody that we're looking at forty-seven percent of our students in math are currently below grade level, below, um, I mean.
They're achieving forty-seven percent.
Well, I think that's ten percent.
Need to stay expectation.
Yeah, that's not.
Well, so it would be fifty-seven percent or fifty-seven percent of whatever the number is. I just, I just want to be clear that we don't want to, we want to make sure we're, that ten percent is really going to see some gains. This is so low. So, and the reading is, again, the same thing with the reading. If you only have thirty kids in the class, ten percent is three kids, you're increasing them. And I just, just looking at that. I'm not sure because I'm not a numerical person, but I just, Denise still here? Yes. I just am wondering. I mean, can we be more specific about third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade students?
Well, I mean, so would it clarify if we go back to the comment about, do we put in where they currently are? Do that help at all? So like if it's twenty-four percent right now, then it would be.
By grade level, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that would do it. Ten percent of each grade level would certainly.
Okay.
Yeah. Lot of work. You don't have that broken down in the state report anywhere. They don't give it by grade level?
Yeah, that's what we, we have those, like we have it.
Right.
We just didn't put it all on here.
Yeah.
We have it all.
Just to, just make this, yeah, we will put it in because.
Does all that really need to go in here or is that just presented each time when we go over this? I think I would concur with that. It's, you know, we've got the umbrella here and then the tactics, maybe we put it at a line in there saying that results are, will be reported in this manner or something, but I don't know that we need to. I mean, yeah, but like we can update, like, you know, seventy-five percent of students will need to exceed. You know, if we look at these, you know, at the end of this year, we can always put note, you know, June twenty twenty-five, or whatever the test was taken, twenty twenty-five, we were at this percent. Or the average was this, something like that. But we'll have a presentation to really see where we are or, or just write it up, graph paper, however you want to do it. Um, but.
Um, but does that make more sense instead of muddying this up? Cause right after seven years of adding all that, this is, I would just think this would be a very muddy document at that point. And I think with goals, you want to, one of the important things is to really be able to like look, see, identify, take action. That's my two cents.
Could it be in a attachment? It gets updated?
An attachment that gets updated? Some point, you're just not going to be able to keep adding it all.
Right.
Right. Document.
No. Is it okay, Nancy? You're calling on me? Okay, I was ready to be. Can we change the, is it possible to change the BASS measurement at third grade to the NWEA scores since we're already doing it? Because we have background on the NWEA now.
You have third grade. Say that again, please.
And they're both right.
The NWEA, no, the NWA is the stretch goal for twenty twenty-eight at eighty percent. But at the BASS measure, we, right now, we are currently going to measure grade level expectation using the BASS third grade.
And NWE.
And the NWEA.
And the stretch goal would be for both included as well.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I misread.
Yeah. Sorry to.
You're thread it. Okay.
Thank you though for clarifying.
And just cause I don't know, what is the top twenty-five percent in the state as far as graduation rates? And, and what's our, are we talking about MSAD diploma or are we talking about diploma, state diploma, MSAD diploma? Can you just describe a little bit more about that third bullet and what that means exactly?
Twenty-five percent of schools? Do you, AJ, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
I'll be honest, I don't know. It's definitely your by year loss percentage. It is. Um, we have a lot of couple of years and in the top quarter of the day with graduation rate. And I think so, um, but again, that, those numbers change annual. So sometimes it might be, you know, one hundred and sixteen, something like that, high schools in the state of Maine. So you're looking at the top, um, thirty roughly.
Yeah.
Um, it's so, I think, I think pretty soon, I think it's June of twenty-six, the state of Maine diploma is going to sunset for COVID. And again, so I don't, I don't want to get into the goals discussion, but I'm not sure, given that that is coming soon and these goals in some iteration are likely to live on, I'm not sure it makes sense to differentiate. In the difference, like, I think graduation rate, it is reported by the state of Maine as the combination of students who received the diploma. And like I said, historically, we've only had the MSAD sixty noble high school diploma.
Except through COVID.
Yeah, I think, you know, put a wrench in that. We would have a positive wrench, but I think.
It's nice to know it's going to sunset. And then I just, I mean, if we're there, maintain, you know, as, as opposed, we're, we're already there.
Yeah. And like I said, I think it does, it does change, you know, cause we are a, a large high school, but we're still dealing with a relatively small sample size. So five students that request records and never enroll at the school, but the records were requested by affects our graduation rate by two and a half percent. You know, so it's, it is, it does fluctuate.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, you know, the number is relatively small.
And we're talking a pretty particular population here. We're talking about only inclusive of students who's, who have been in this district since kindergarten. So any, any student that's transient, that, that has entered our district or left and come back, um, would not be included in, in this sample size according to the goals it's written. That, is that how I'm reading it?
That is how you're reading it. And currently we've still been, we've been maintaining that graduation rate in that top twenty-five regardless.
Yeah. And I would. Work, but I am more than comfortable reporting both to the board to see. Um, I will say as a high school building principal, sometimes area districts, we feel as though a student is, is sent our way, um, given that their lack of, you know, opportunity and they're unlikely to make it. And, you know, I think some folks deal with things in lots of different ways. So that, that is like a source of like frustration because how can we help with, you know, it over and they're coming to us where we have a higher graduation requirement than all of our neighbors. So it's like, oh, you know, you, you had a kiddo that clearly was struggling to beat it at district A.
Mm-hmm.
And now you've kind of made that kid's life even harder.
That's a really good point. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just gonna say, I see it more as like a control for our data. So like, it's our control is that, that K through twelve, like, we know that's a hundred percent attributed to Noble. So that I, it would be interesting to see like a side by side.
Yeah, I think we can report both.
Yeah, but it's interesting to know, like, okay, this is because Noble educated this person that they graduated.
I think, I think it's an interesting point, but I'm, I'm also, you know, listening to AJ talk there. I, I actually, I, I don't want administration to feel so pressured by a graduation percentage. I mean, I know people as adults who dropped out of high school and ended up fantastically successful as adults. And, you know, they, they, they were able to make, they worked hard, right? I mean, that's the, that's the trait. They worked hard. Um, you know, and it's almost like some, some kids, the, the best option in their life at that time in the very near future is to not graduate and, and do, and do other things for a while. Um, so I, I'm actually wondering whether that's a, whether that's a. How, how, how important is that goal if we're actually worried? We, we just, we just heard great conversation about how, how student focused we are individually. And I, I'd hate to see that change because we're trying to get to that twenty-five percent graduation rate. Rather us really just be focused on the individual student doing the best, the best we can to serve them. Um, let's just, I mean, nice to know and report it out. Again, I just don't know how important it is to have it as one of our, uh, board goals on this document.
Oh, I absolutely disagree. I think it's really important for, for any, anybody in this day and age to at least have a minimum of a high school education. Um, and yeah, maybe it's a challenge. Maybe some kids do all right by leaving in their junior year or their sophomore year, but a lot of those also fall through the cracks when it comes successful adults. So I would say that as we keep the focus on the individual students, because at the end of the day, that's important. Every human being is important. But we also have the score of making sure that twenty, at least we're in the top twenty-five in the state because we are committed to those individuals and their success as adults.
I think we just need to do the research before we have that conversation. I mean, the research is out there on how successful people are after high school. So before any of us feel, you know, there's going to be like the, the one kid that was a success story that happened to be a genius or something, but I think we just need to do the research if we want to explore ever moving that.
I don't think it's, I think it's always good to have a graduation rate, just like goal, you know? But I, but I mean, I'm okay with taking it up too, Josh. So things to do.
Yeah. And I, and I would just add, I think one of the benefits, and I know I said that, and it is a relatively small number that is. But we are very lucky with regard to graduation rate, being a large high school and one of the largest high schools. And again, we work incredibly hard to help every student have the opportunity to get across the stage on graduation day. But a single student or a couple of single students, we are in a position due to our size, does not sink our graduation. It's okay for there to be an expectation that our graduation rate is high. If we were a school and we were sitting in a place where we were talking about the average. Every kid, how many does he say?
Yeah, yeah.
Or just moved out and they didn't register, were down, you know, like, basically get below ninety percent. We don't have that worry, you know, obviously our numbers are bigger, so everything's to scale. So there's plenty for me to worry about on a monthly basis, but I think that does buffer us a little bit from needing to worry about those. The, the couple of kiddos who may have a different path and we have kiddos that are graduating to be okay and say, look, it's more important for me to do X, Y, or Z right now and I'm not going to graduate. And I don't feel that pressure of having to, again, I don't have any control to make that anyway, but I don't have that pressure that I wish I had the control because it's not going to put the district in a negative light. And I can know their individual story that's happening.
So I, I agree with Kate. I think high school at that time is not an over expectation. I, I do understand what you're saying, but I, I think that we should be encouraging everybody. I, I love that the conversation and at graduation, we recognize students going into the trades. I absolutely love that, but even that is with the high school education. So if they decide later on they want to do more, whatever. Um, uh, my question was, so for accreditation of the college educate, public programs, we have to maintain a certain graduation standard. Does, is, does that, is that a factor in the high school's accreditation?
Yeah, we ask, which is our new education.
Yep.
They don't setting a minimum requirement for graduation to open. But I think, I think there are many pride in, or rightly so, community pressures that we've only haven't placed long before the ask probably stepped in to have a concern. Many people would be concerned by.
Awesome. Thanks.
I'm being dramatic and I know I am. Um.
For it. I might put that in the notes.
My fear is if we make a statement that we're not concerned about graduation rates.
And why do we care about how the third graders are reading?
Like, I feel like, or I guess the better question is, why do we care to raise all the other things if we don't have, I, like, I see.
A long.
I see graduation as the end goal. Yeah, that's their goal for.
Yes, right.
Educated high school graduates is our goal.
Yeah.
Just the accomplishment of completing something is a huge.
I don't think it hurts us.
No.
I don't think it's.
I, I hope, I hope I'm not being misunderstood. I, I'm very much in favor of high school graduation.
I mean, we're all agreeing, like, like, there's not anyone over here saying, like. Don't believe in a high school graduation. Don't believe in high school graduation is important. Like, that's just.
Yeah.
I, I want to make, I want to make sure that, that I wasn't being misunderstood, that, okay, okay.
The goal setting.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Took it out, it might be perceived that.
True.
And I make a motion to accept these goals.
Anybody else have any other? Did it get on to the last page or was that?
The other ones too, or we just looking at the pathways? I mean, I'm confused.
Well, we already looked at all of them. So I think now we're just adopting it as a full document. More individually like than we, and nothing really changed.
But they'll phrase, seriously, like. Make sure everybody's comfortable.
No, I mean.
Stuff.
Yeah, it's on like the big thing.
I, I would just say, thanks for the inclusion of the stretch goal. I, I see, I see the, uh, the, the offering of getting to what our students really have the ability to achieve. And I, I just want to note that I read that and saw that and thank, thank administration for, and, and board for, um, being open to that.
So you made a motion. We need a second.
One second. Any further discussions? Hey, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Okay. I think we now are on employment. Yes. So we have a resignation for Stanley Scontras who was, um, is here at high school as a math teacher. And he, um, accepted another professional opportunity to have a resignation.
Yeah. Back to.
Yes.
True.
Well, I have a question. Can we do any sort of accident review about what was so enticing for him and another?
Mm-hmm.
Sure do.
And we certainly, yes, okay.
Yeah, certainly.
I believe it was not to a school.
Oh, like, yeah, okay, yes. I'm sorry, who is the second on that one?
Elba.
Thank you, Ms. Elba.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Okay, that's that. That all you have to.
All, all for employment today.
Yes, we did the superintendent update.
Yes, I have to serve thirty days or something.
But now we're on other. I have, I have one other.
Okay.
That I didn't do. Um, just, we are aiming to have the next board meeting in the library. Our technology department is working really hard to work on, again, the sound system at the tables so that not just do we have the microphones that feed into the, um, the monitor, but also so that it can project out to the community. So they've been working on that. So that's the hope. It just makes more sense that you all can see. You want another, this is really tight and this is really hard. So just, just pay attention to where that location is, um, when you get the agenda. Thank you. Sorry. That's it. I just have another and I, um, I've noticed a couple of people have been using their personal emails. I, I would caution against that with school board business. I would keep to your school board account. Um, if there's a FOIA request from emails and you've done some on your personal email, all of those get FOIA'd too. So I would just recommend that people use their school board email.
How do you prevent? Like mine gets pulled by staff. Like my school board email gets emailed all the time by staff because that's what comes up when I type in my name. So I get that, but then the opposite.
First, your personal one goes first?
School board comes first to staff. You like. Right. You're emailing the kids. I'll get it.
Oh, my school board email.
Yes, but then the flip side is if someone knows me outside personally and I email the school board, my personal email defaults. How do you, how do you, like?
You say, please don't use this address.
I know.
Ordered it to your, like, if you get one from.
Cause I've been doing this.
Ordering.
Ordered it to yourself.
Okay.
And that way.
That's true.
To the school and then.
Cause you're not going to be able to fix that.
That's the problem.
Yes.
But, and apologies that our staff are sending you things on your school board for, about your kids. We'll try to remind them not to do, I, it is absolutely just, it just pops in.
Yeah, it just pops in.
Right, it just pops up. Nancy.
If, um, they're going to investigate for FOIA, they probably going to take all your computers. It doesn't really matter what you use when you come right down to it. Cause.
Yes, but they are not going to need your password on your personal account. I'm not giving it.
It's just good practice. That's all.
Yep, I know.
She's not too, it's okay. Um, it's just one of those things that it makes it cleaner.
Anybody else have any others? Who's that? Jerry?
Hello. Hello, Adia. Um, I, I want to, uh, thank Joyce and Zen for their prominence. Um, I too found it appalling at the level of constant attacks and bullying tactics at nearly every meeting. The attacks are especially focused on Josh and every time he opens his mouth, uh, you jump down his throat, cutting him off when he has a floor. If we, if you were treated like that, we would have meetings constantly with the attorney. The norms, uh, door seems to swing in one direction only. And, uh, I hope parents are finally watching, uh, the school board meeting. Hopefully they are seeing there are issues with curriculum and testing. Just for the math chart in Shannon's presentation, we should see more parents here expressing concerns about their education in math that their children are receiving, which has been a problem for over a decade and we don't dare talk about science. Um, it took me a bit to understand the NWEA, what it means and what it doesn't mean. Uh, it compares student to student to rank them in their class. It does not tell, tell us what the students know. How does that help the student, the kids improve? We are failing and all there is, is garbage and petty attacks on those who are trying to make changes that that stop this downward trajectory. We got a history lesson last, um, last meeting. It had major holes in it. Um, that was not really helpful to the discussion. How many people here were on the board in two thousand thirteen and thereafter, when testing scores hit the skids and started dropping like a rock? Do you feel responsible for the decline in performance? I for one am, am disgusted with it. Anybody else?
I was just going to say that, um, the North Borough PTO entered that last parade in one first place and we're not going to dare risk.
Don't buy us.
For a parade because we're going to get at the school for the holiday performances next week. So people, families can take pictures in front of the. week. So people, families can take pictures in front of the things. And then just a reminder, I think when we do say things that we should make sure we have facts, because I don't know a lot of the information that you just shared, Jerry. So, you know, having the evidence, like Ali always says, like the evidence based with what you're saying. Thank you for sharing.
Everybody else?
I would say this has been a very productive meeting tonight.
Yes.
Agreed.
Very nice. I appreciate that. All right, somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, no, we have, sorry, public input again. Sorry. Have anybody else would like to share public input?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?